I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on December 8th, 2023 through posting a notification of the press in accordance.
Thank you, President Hayward. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Sally Pope, the principal at Monroe Elementary. Sally was the Monroe School Counselor from 1998 to 2011 before going to Marshall Middle School. Mrs. Pope as the interim principal and later was awarded the position of principal at Monroe Elementary. Principal Pope has a bachelor's degree from UW-Whitewater and a master's degree in supervision and administration from National Lewis University. Sally has taught kindergarten, first, and second grades. Mrs. Pope, who do you have with you tonight?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. This evening, I have two fabulous Monroe Mustangs with me. I have Anthony Zagone, who is a fifth grader, and he is part of our Lego Robotics team and is a wonderful student at Monroe, follows the Mustang manners always. And then we have his little sister, Lillian, and she is in first grade at Monroe, and she too is very good about following the Mustang manners at Monroe. And we like to keep it all in the family at Monroe, and their mom is one of our fantastic paraprofessionals that works with kids all day long at Monroe Elementary. So, thank you. And representing Monroe, who happens to be a Blue Ribbon School, just in case y'all forgot. Okay. Are we ready? One, two, three.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you, Blue Ribbon School. Safety message, Carl Dammehausen.
I'm not with it tonight. Now, we talk about many things in safety and that, and I think it's something that's been added thanks to Commissioner Ardry that I think has helped us immensely on learning things I know I have. But one of the things I continue to notice is our driving, not necessarily us, but everyone. Christmas is truly here. They're crazy. They don't bother to stop fully at stop signs, and we're all good. Are they gonna stop or not? And that, so there are many, many things that show around Christmas. A lot of things that I think makes a better driver, better safety, and sets a better example for their children, because I always see a lot of children with them. So I'm hoping people pay more attention and that it gets out that people are doing this. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 3.3, student presenters. The Grace Marota from Craig.
Hello, members of the school board. I hope you're all doing well and staying warm in this cold weather. My name is Grace Marota, and I'm the school board representative at Craig. To get started, many exciting things are happening at Craig as we get ready to leave for winter break. The Spanish Club is having a Pulsera bracelet sale until December 15th. These are one-of-a-kind, unique bracelets made by a Central American artist. All proceeds are invested back into the artists and their communities in Guatemala and Nicaragua. The Craig High School Music Department Winter Concert is this Wednesday, December 13th, in the large auditorium at 7:00 PM. The band will be performing Sleigh Ride, a yearly tradition at Craig, and many other festive holiday tunes. The Orchestra Winter Concert is Monday, December 18th, in the large auditorium at. Assembly is January 10th at 9:30 AM in the large auditorium. This assembly is essential to lift up the voices of all of our students and give them a chance to share their culture while also remembering the positive impact Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had on our world. And tickets to complete a half-court shot at the girls' basketball game against Parker last Thursday. All of the proceeds from the raffles and the court shot tickets will go to Project 1649, an organization dedicated to helping homeless teens. The raffle tickets were for baskets that students donated items for, having themes such as a spa basket, movie basket, and even, my personal favorite, a bubbler basket. Science Honor Society and Key Club collected items for a program called Craig Cares, where students brought in items that disadvantaged students had put on their wish lists so that they would have presents for Christmas. This program was started by Mrs. Lippincott and is a great way to help the students at our school. Bags of Hope is this Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 AM at the Dollar General Center. Students are invited to, with other community members, help pack and load bags. Is this month at Craig. Dress Ember is a social movement where students wear dresses for the month of December to raise awareness for human trafficking. The Junior Optimist Club is selling Candygrams this month. Candygrams include a card with a message that students can send to a friend or a teacher and a candy cane. This is a great activity to spread some holiday cheer. The Winter Formal, dubbed the Snowball, is a new tradition at Craig. The Snowball will be on Saturday, 27th, 2024, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM at Craig. The Student Council plans and decorates this dance, so we're very excited to get started with the playlists, theme, and the decorations. Lastly, I hope everyone has a safe and happy holidays, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of you next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Grace. All right, and from Parker, the Addison Riley Lean.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you guys. I want to apologize beforehand because I am getting over a cold, so if I, like, have to do a little cough to the side, just ignore that. I don't want to do it at you guys. That might be, but, so to start out, Parker is ready to welcome the next group of future Vikings, which is the class of 2028. Students from. Guides for the incoming eighth graders and last week, eighth graders from Edison, Franklin, Marshall, St. Williams. Students, marketing, all those sorts, and they had a lot of fun. The Parker High School production of Humbug the Musical provided wonderful opportunities for the cast to work with Broadway, Netflix, and Disney composer Christopher Curtis and book writer Jim Like. These opportunities provided them with real-life experiences that performers and technical theater people will experience. A show is workshopped and brought to the stage. This past Tuesday, December 5th, our DECA members had so much fun at the Parker, DECA, and Van Buren Holiday Hoopla. Whether it was cookie decorating, helping with the games, or even having a dance party, which was just a room where I put two DECA members in and said, "Dance," and hoped that the kids went in, and they did. They were arguing over who got to stay in there, so it was a fun time. They brought lots of smiles to the students at Van Buren and made their night. I did have to take a kid out of the kiddie pool because we had a duck game, and he was, like, drenched, and I was like, "Please don't tell your mom," because I was nervous. Your kid's on my watch, and he just, like, looks like he went swimming, so, but he had a lot of fun, I suppose, so. Parker DECA is proud to serve our school district and our community. The Parker Arts Academy Dance Program attended the Nutcracker Ballet presented by the Milwaukee Ballet on December 7th. The Big Give is underway. The Big Give program is a part of the Parker Closet. Students fill out wish lists and then are issued a number that allows people from. Season. The Parker High School Winter Choir Concert will be held on Thursday, December 14th, at 7:00 PM in the Parker High School Auditorium. The Parker Cantorum Choir will be featured on the NBC 15 Sounds of the Season on December 24th at 10:00 PM and December 25th at 6:00 AM, which would be Christmas Eve and Christmas. I'm not sure why I didn't just say. Parker's debate team will compete on January 13th and 14th in the Wisconsin State Debate Tournament, which will be held in West Bend. Parker will be represented by Sorch Morris and Nika Cantwell. They have worked hard to earn this opportunity, and we wish them the best of luck at state. Parker High School staff has raised over $3,000 for this year's district Bags of Hope Food Drive. On Saturday, December 16th, at the Dollar General Warehouse, dozens of Parker students and staff will volunteer their time to pack and deliver groceries for families in our community. On Friday, December 15th, Mrs. Adams Culinary Arts students are hosting a salad luncheon for Parker's staff and would like to invite school board members and district administration to join them. Students have been working hard to plan, develop, and test. And finally, in athletic news, we have only been in the winter season for about a month. However, our student athletes and coaches have been very busy. Our cheer team continues to bring a high level of energy at our basketball games each week. In addition, they have begun their cheer competition season. The team had a great experience competing at Waukesha South High School at the South Side Showdown last Saturday. Our girls' basketball team has been hard at work and are playing at Madison. Moms and Dance Team has done an excellent job during halftime performances and are excited for the opportunity to honor our parents at halftime on Friday night. Parker Boys Swim recently hosted the annual Parker Relays and have a busy upcoming weekend competing at Sun Prairie on Friday and swimming in the Beloit Memorial Invite on Saturday. On the ice, the Janesville Bluebirds are excited to get back on the ice at home as we take on Sun Prairie East at home on Thursday. Also, the Rock County Fury are off to a strong five-to-two start and have a home game this evening in Beloit. Parker Gymnastics recently competed at the Cougar Invite and are excited to host our first home competition of the year this Thursday versus Madison West. Parker Boys Basketball will be back on the floor at home this Wednesday versus Verona. And finally, our wrestling team has been competing in Big Eight duels and most recently won the Edgerton Wrestling Invite last Saturday. On December 2nd, we hosted our 10th Annual Kramer Brown Wrestling Invitational, and we would like to congratulate Parker Senior Kaden Brannenberg, who earned his 100th career win. Also, we have had several student athletes who have already committed to play at the collegiate level, while others are still making their. Kalen Minnick is going to be going to Clark University for volleyball. Paul Kim is going to UW-Whitewater for football, and J.J. Douglas is going to. Porter has announced her transfer and will now compete on one of the most prominent track and field teams in the country, where she will now be an Oregon Duck. On behalf of Parker Athletics and the Parker student body as a whole, we want to wish our school board and the Janesville community a very happy and safe holiday season. And as always, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me yap about Parker news, even though it's all very important, so, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Motion to adopt the December 12th Board of Education agenda. Motion made by Dammehausen, second by Herda. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes eight-zero. Commissioner Ardry is absent. Citizen comments? We have none. All right. Consent agenda. Consider approval of the consent agenda. I know, I think I heard Millard first, second by Myers. That passes eight-zero. Thank you. All right, let's try harder, guys. All right. Well, we have no more motions. All right, five. Consider approval of the, oh, we do have one, of the 25, 24, 25, 25, 26 school year calendars. Dr. DeGraff.
All right. Good evening. So tonight, I want to present to you the 24, 25, and the 25, 26 school year calendars for approval. I just realized I don't have. And so you have received the memo regarding the process that we used for developing the calendar, as well as you have a copy of both of the calendars. And so tonight, I want to take some time to just highlight some of the information in the memo, including a little bit about the process and the key stakeholders involved, our staff survey, what were some of the goals of the calendar, and considerations. As we developed the calendars for the next two school years, we included, Chris Mett and Walt and I were a part of facilitating the calendar committee, and we had a group of. We also, as part of our stakeholder feedback, sent out a staff survey. We had 662 respondents to the survey. The survey was a little bit different than previous surveys, where, you know, we didn't ask you to vote on Calendar A or B, but more questions like. Of the quarter, or do you want the day before Thanksgiving off? So the survey was very helpful, so all of the responses on the survey that had the majority, we made those adjustments in the calendar. So we used all of the feedback from the survey from all of our stakeholders. So as we think about what were the goals of the calendar, working with Superintendent Holtzman, one of our goals, as we continue to think about continuous growth and improvement, is increasing the instructional days for our students. And so we have, in the past calendars, had around 170 instructional days for students. We, in the next two years, we will have 172 and 173 instructional days. We, and that's working within, we have 190 contracted days for our certified staff, and then the 173 instructional days within that. Also, our goals were, we wanted to be able to provide professional development throughout the school year. Again, some of the feedback we had received is that. Starts, and the next two years have seven and eight days before the school starts. And one of those days, we have also changed to our Ready Set Goal Conferences and freshman orientation, so we can really actually start school on September 1st as well. We also wanted to balance the. It was never a full week, so you'll see that they have the day before Thanksgiving off and just one professional development or workday during that month. We tried to align our spring breaks with Rock County. That was another request. What we found challenging, as we called the different Rock County school districts, is that they don't have their calendars out yet, and we've, they have three or four different spring breaks as well. We believe that we're aligned to Milton, but they had, their board hasn't passed their calendar yet either, so, but we did really try to reach out to all of those districts and help with that alignment. Another piece of feedback from staff is that our professional development days have been Friday, which are more challenging sometimes at the end of the week, so requesting to have professional development days on Monday are those professional development and workdays. So that change is also reflected in the calendar as well. Having the stakeholder team, they realized when you have 190 contracted days, you have 173 days, and you have to start on September 1st. It doesn't leave a lot of flexibility and a lot of room for making changes. And so even though they understood that that was, they understood. They were also very helpful in providing feedback on what we could do within those parameters and guidelines. As well as, you know, they were also helpful in giving us feedback on professional development and how they appreciate having the more of those days spread across throughout the school year and less at the beginning of the school year as well. So we feel that the process of developing the calendar for the next two years, although, you know, we did provide a survey and we had a stakeholder team, there were still sometimes 20 to 30% that did not agree with some of the questions on the survey, so that could mean 20 to 30% you may hear from. So, you know, we, we definitely, you know, know that not everyone will be happy with everything in the calendar, but we feel that we used a comprehensive process to try to reflect, you know, the goals of our district as far as focusing on student growth and achievement. So that is a summary and highlight.
You can just refresh me on this. I thought it, it wasn't. Thank you. Oh, that's not bad. Anyway, kind of refresh me on this, because I look at it, and I look at break days, and that, now, where do snow days fit in if we have one? I mean, we can't control when that day happens. The weather control does it. But what days, what priorities do we have on it for, like, is it break days, or is it some of the others?
So the way, because we have increased instructional minutes for students, and in the memo you have the instructional minutes that we're required to have based on DPI, we have additional minutes and days embedded in the calendar so that if we do have snow days, we would not have to use those professional development days or extend the end of the school year. So we have those embedded within.
Sort of banking our minutes, basically.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Herda?
I just want to say thank you to you and Chris for facilitating the group. I think years that I've been a school board member, this has probably been the most comprehensive process, and the fact that you surveyed the staff and took. Surveyed them and really pinpointed the struggles that usually caused frustrations in the calendar, a little bit more. Was kind of a little going, "Ooh, they go until, like, June 10th. Why is that?" Because that's a little bit later than what we've always gone through. But if you note, it's just the way Christmas break falls, and they'll actually have more time off because Christmas falls on a Thursday and Christmas Eve falls on a Wednesday, so when you have those days in the middle of the week, you really need a two-week, and that only happens once every, what, five years? But that was my question, and I thought I had the answer, and Allison confirmed it, so that was one of my questions. And I also want to note, thank you for moving the professional development days to Friday, because any of you that work or are retired and have worked, Friday, you're really exhausted, so then to actually have a professional learning day where you're trying to focus and learn, not really good. So thank you for doing it on Monday when they're bright and sharp. I appreciate that. Thank you. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Commissioner Herda said, I think, from where the committee started with the options, and especially looking at the conference days at the elementary school and the vast amount of discussion around how long those days would be. I think both.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, and, you know, because this has been. You know, your team on the process, because there's, you know, there's, there's always going to be winners and losers in the calendar debate, and it's very difficult. But what it feels like happened with the stakeholders that you brought in and the conversations that you had, even if people are not as, you know, fully satisfied, they are at least part of the conversation, and they understand the obstacles and the limitations. And, you know, and nobody's 100% happy at all the, all the time on this. And I just, I just think that it's a really, it's just a really, I'm sure it took longer and, you know, more time and energy, and I appreciate your willingness to do that because I think that the, even though it did take that kind of, you know, energy, I think the outcome is better, not just in the fact that we have the calendars, but I'm talking about climate and, you know, and.
We have a motion made by Murray, seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? This is eight-zero. I just gave Mark a couple, there's three months on each of them, they have teacher count days, one-off.
Oh, okay. We will check that, thank you.
That's all I was
Okay.
Thank you. Good job, Allison. All right.
That was a joke. I thought you were just open, I could like, put anything on the agenda and you would have proven.
Almost.
Okay. Careful. Thank you. We, briefly, next Monday is the fourth and likely final meeting for our strategic planning group. We have identified some leading strategic priorities. We have identified leading mission statements and vision statements, so I'm encouraged that we'll have a quality kind of document by the end of that and share that out with the board for our February meeting. We had an opportunity to engage our elementary, upper elementary students to give them a quick survey, so they had an opportunity in grades three, four, and five to give us some feedback on what they thought was valuable in school. We got some feedback from some of our graduates, and again, taking all that information together and gathering that, the And all of our priorities will need to be leaning towards the optimization of student outcomes, and I'm excited about the work. We still have a really engaged group, and I continue to work with the Donovan group on the process, but she continues to say Monday night at six o'clock, six o'clock at Marshall Middle School, we'll kind of finalize our document, and then we'll work in January to kind of put all the pieces together, and I'm confident that we will share with you a very well-defined, organized, and I think one of the things that Donovan does really well is paints a kind of a mural and puts into a document, this is what we're going to present to the board, so you'll be excited. I've got some ideas about what that looks like, so, just wanted to kind of give you an update about what that looks like. I'll kind of give you a final update at the next board meeting, but things are looking good.
Thank you, that's good work. All right, we're gonna skip Section 6. We won't have an FPG update tonight, we'll have that next meeting. Number 7, a PPC update. Mr. Paul.
Well, hello, everyone. Our last PPC meeting was held on Monday, December Sale stands for, not necessarily these words, but this is what it is, it's School Leaders' Institute for Transformational Leadership, correct? All right. I just wanted everyone to kind of have a, an idea of that. A big focus of Sale for this school year has been to align our district goals to match what is actually being evaluated on the state report card, so I thought that was a great idea, which Forward Exam, and then the pre-ACT/ACT scores instead of other markers that maybe our district has looked at in the past. As a district, we are now in our second year with Sale, and administrators from all levels in the district were invited to participate at the workshop, or I don't know if workshop is the right word, yeah, so that we, as a district, can achieve better insight on some of the decisions that are being made, and I thought that was really wonderful, that we're bringing in people from different levels, so that, hey, if we're making decisions, we're hearing, how are these decisions impacting you? Schedule-wise, does it work? Those types of things. Feedback from principals who participated focused on timing effectiveness of some of the decisions, and from this, we have been able to re-time certain planned professional development for increased efficacy. We heard from Jackson Elementary Principal about her experience At the middle level, we heard from Edison Principal, and the three middle schools have become more cohesive and collaborative through their PLCs and PLTs. Working through Sale is helping with the new flex time to be more effective, because they are using data to support how to draw students or move students around to utilize that time effectively, especially when students need more support. At the high school level, Sale is supporting with the ACT alignment and the launch of Mastery Prep, and Mastery Prep is a program that's being used to help students better prepare for the ACT. Also, Sale has been used to help expand avid strategies, we've all heard about avid before, and so now they've been able to implement avid strategies throughout the school through professional development that's been planned. These were all really great, inspiring things to hear about what our district has been able to accomplish through our second year of Sale, so that was great. Of course, if you want to hear all the full details, you can go back and watch PPC, the recorded viewing. I know that that is exciting time. Also, we discussed the review of hiring practices, and this was just a general overview with a memo from Mr. Gardner. Questions have been, that came in, that we, the board was asking about hiring of new positions, and, and basically, we just talked about the requirement for board-approved station about administration is being mindful of, of board preferences on certain things. I think that's a fair evaluation of, discussed during that. We also heard the proposals for some new courses for the 24, 25 Course Handbook, and there were two very interesting new additions, coaching and officiating sports. I thought Commissioner to find coaches and recruit officiants, right? That's a difficult thing, so we're, we're hope, we're looking at what's going on in our district and community and aligning our courses accordingly. Also, there are a new proposed course is High Construction, I think Highway, I think I have an error here, Highway Construction Skills Training Academy, which just sounds very interesting. It's a whole process of all of these different courses and very in-depth that I can't really get into here, because I think it would be too time-consuming, but again, if you want to hear more about that, Mr. Maddenwald really spoke a lot about that program through PPC meetings, so go back and reflect on that. But what I think is really great is the new classes, and as we're looking at all of our courses, we are working as a district to reflect the trends of interest both locally, but also the needs around our state, which I think is, I don't know, it's just really important that we're being mindful of those things and not arbitrarily picking classes presentation, so I don't need to go over that again. And then we had two Niola policies that were put on consent agenda that you all were able to review. So that was our PPC meeting. I want to let everyone know that because of scheduling after the new year, our January meeting have a lot of great content planned for February, March, April, et cetera, so we will be meeting again in session, I think the 8th of January, and so if there's anything that you would like PPC to be considering, or you have any agenda additions, please reach out by then, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, Liz. Quick question, you mentioned two Niola policies, I only saw, is it really just the one?
I think there, I think I may, like, I think I said the wrong thing.
One of the PO and the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure I didn't miss one.
Yeah, no, you didn't. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Number eight, summary of board requests. Denise, do you want to help on that one, or are we, do you have any?
Do you want me to do meetings?
I'm sorry, in meetings?
Yep.
In future meetings, yes.
Okay.
The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 19th at 2:30 PM here at the Educational Services Center, and our next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, January